It's October the 17th. This is the Iowa City Council, we're holding our work session. So, the first topic for tonight is an overview of the Complete Streets policy. Looks like Kent is going to speak to us. Good evening, Kent.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. We've got three topics kind of rolled into one presentation here for you this afternoon. The first is a presentation of the Complete Streets policy, which I'll be covering. The next is a statewide urban design and specifications manual presentation, which Ron Kentucky and Jason Havel, I believe, will be covering. And then a major projects review for some parks projects that Julie Seidel Johnson will be covering, as well as some projects that the city engineer will be covering. But first, the Complete Streets policy. Quickly, the original Complete Streets policy was adopted back in 2007 by the city council. It was one of the first in the state. In fact, I think it was the second in the state at that time, which was impressive. A revised policy then was adopted by council in 2015 to bolster the Blue Zones efforts and becoming a Blue Zones community, and to provide some additional detail and specificity to that 2007 plan. And what I want to drive home is the fact that the general intent of that policy really remains unchanged from 2007. Largely, most of the Complete Streets policy practices were already in place, and really we were just formalizing what the city's really been doing for a decade, if not longer, at least since I've been here. As far as the vision of the Complete Streets policy is concerned, the vision is to realize long-term cost savings and improve public health, reduce fuel consumption, better environmental stewardship, and so forth. And it does so by ensuring that all current and projected users of the public right-of-way can safely and conveniently get to their destination. That's really the kind of the goal or the key of a Complete Streets policy. And we would say that all current and projected users, we mean motorists, pedestrians, bicycles, senior citizens, freight carriers, the whole gamut. Excuse me. So, as far as implementation goes, who needs to comply with the policy? Any city department or private entity performing work in the right-of-way would need to comply with the Complete Streets policy, as well as any building or infrastructure that gets dedicated to the city after it's completed. It implies to new and reconstructed streets and maintenance projects when possible. It's accomplished by using ADA standards, excuse me, ADA-compliant sidewalks, bike lanes, shared-use lanes, planning of street trees, working on parks and infrastructure within the right-of-way, and again, runs the whole gamut of design options. Capital projects will also incorporate facilities found in council-approved plans, and this is a big one. What comes to mind recently is the Bike Master Plan, the Parks Master Plan, Riverfront Crossings Master Plan. All of those have design elements for right-of-way that we should be complying with and not just sitting on a shelf. All those had a lot of public vetting and a lot of public input. So, we want to make sure that the Complete Streets policy is followed and applied to all those key projects as well. In terms of context-sensitive design, the Complete Streets policy also takes that into account. Each street should be practically, the design should be practically undertaken to complement the neighborhood for which it exists, and this is very important, using accepted design standards, best practices in urban and street design, construction operations, and so forth. And what the Complete Streets policy strives to do is consider all available design options and manuals. And in doing so, it's important to note the distinction between the Complete Streets policy and design and engineering. Really, what the Complete Streets policy tries to do is sit down at the early stages of any planning project we're working on and finding out who and where, or who will be using the right-of-way and where they need to be and what mode they're traveling in. Later in the process, then, we work on the design and the engineering, of course, and we want to make sure then that all those folks that we've identified can get to their location safely and conveniently. That's really the distinction that we try to make between the Complete Streets policy and then design and engineering that comes later. Quickly, I just wanted to walk through a couple of the more recent Complete Streets designs that I thought were important or of note. On the left-hand side of the screen, looking south, this is South Sycamore, looking towards the new Alexander Elementary School. And I've just put some call-outs in there of some of the different Complete Streets design elements that were included in that project. There were a number of street trees planted on both sides of the corridor. There's a roundabout sort of in the distance in that photo, and many of you, I'm sure, have been around that. Street trees, of course, make a more comfortable environment for pedestrians in the corridor. They also provide additional safety for those pedestrians. The roundabout, of course, slows traffic, as well as makes for a safer intersection design. This corridor had the addition of bike lanes, which I think was important, as again, it leads towards an elementary school. And then, this even has a refuge island that was included in this project to get folks from the east side of the corridor, from the trail system, the Sycamore Greenway Trail system, to the west side of the corridor, to the wide sidewalk, to be able to access the school residences and so forth. So, a lot of different Complete Streets-type designs in just one simple project in Iowa City. And then, the second example's on the right side of the page. This is, of course, the First Avenue Grade Separation Project. Of course, there's the grade separation with the railroad there in the forefront of the picture. This was one of our first and largest four-to-three lane conversions that were undertaken in the city, which, of course, then adds the shared center-left turn lane, adds additional safety for motorists, because you've got refuge then from vehicles that are approaching you from the rear. This also had wide sidewalks, and of course, bike lanes then as an addition to the four-to-three lane conversion. This isn't all by any means of the Complete Streets-type elements that we've used. We've, of course, got a lot of different traffic calming features that we're now introducing into roadways. We've got bus pull-offs, we've got bus shelters, street furniture, and so forth. Like any policy, there's also exceptions that can be made. In this case, given the right circumstance, exceptions can be documented in writing by the city engineer and reviewed by the city manager, or of course, by the city council. Exceptions include safety, legal, emergency, environmental, excessive cost, and other considerations. There's only one that's been made to date, and this, we believe, is back to 2007, and that was one that you all recently had a hand in, and that was the Douglas Court Douglas Street Sidewalk, Complete Streets policy issue that came up. The issue, as you'll remember, was there was a water main that was going in. Douglas Court currently did not have sidewalks at the time of the project. City staff went through, as we do, we sit down and go through, sort of at the project initiation phase, and decide who and what and where we need to accommodate. Having no sidewalks, we thought it'd be a good time to introduce those sidewalks. What we learned was, a majority of that neighborhood did not really want sidewalks. And ultimately, they really met some of the exceptions for really lack of use, lack of pedestrian use, and then they also have pretty low traffic volume. So, there's a couple, two or three different exceptions that they probably made, and ultimately they were granted, and the city did not construct sidewalks. But that's the type of policy, I think, and the approach that we need to use for those types of projects, then, is that even though we think at the onset we might be helping, we were really, in that case, potentially hurting the neighborhood. And then, lastly, there's a number of performance measures that we use to measure the success of the policy. And this is new from the 2007 version to the 2015 version. And now, there's a number of performance measures that we track, including miles of bike lanes tripped or built, linear feet of pedestrian accommodations, ADA ramps constructed, number of street trees, and so forth. So, we're able to track those and sort of measure our success in terms of actual facilities introduced into town or improved, that sort of thing. With that, that's just a nutshell of what the Complete Streets policy is and isn't. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has, unless we want to hold those until after the other folks have given their presentations.
Thanks, Kent. You went through that pretty quickly.
I did.
Will you be able to provide us with a written version of it, please?
Of the policy itself? Of course.
Well, no, what you just presented us, the material on the screen.
Yeah.
We can put the whole PowerPoint, including the following slides, in your next info packet.
Good. That'd be helpful. Thank you. Okay. Questions or reactions from council members?
I think our policy is pretty strong. I think the only area that I might have some comment would be on the performance measures. And there, I would suggest that we include the rates of crashes, injuries, and fatalities by mode. And we might want to also include, and I don't know where we are with this kind of program, but if we complete safe routes to schools, that might be another measure as well.
Sure. Yeah, those are all good ideas. And those are all things we already measure, so, you know, whether we measure those as part of the policy or independently, it's, you know, either way is fine.
John, were you specifically asking for a change to the policy?
What I'm suggesting is, we could revise the written document of the Complete Streets policy to include a couple more performance measures, such as I suggested.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Does it have to be a written change?
Well, it's a policy. I mean, if you want to change it, we can certainly bring forward that change to you. You have to think about what you're trying to measure in relation to the plan, though. While I totally agree that tracking accident rates is the right thing to do, and we should be doing that, and we are, and we can report that to you in any number of different ways, are you looking to track accident rates at streets that we haven't worked on? I mean, inevitably, most of the accidents are going to be in areas that haven't benefited from this policy yet. What these try to measure are how we're changing the streets as we're working on them. So, if you're, you know, if you wanted to measure accidents, some of the locations, our highest locations, are going to be areas that haven't had a Complete Streets makeover, if you will. So, you may see accident numbers, and I'm just not sure that that's going to inform the policy that much. But I think what's important is you all identify those indicators that you feel are really important citywide, irrespective of policies, and let us report those to you in the manner you want us to.
Yeah, I agree. And there are certain corridors, say the four-to-three lane conversion that was just complete on First Avenue. That would be one where Jeff and I have already had a discussion about just seeing what the DOT had collected in terms of collisions before, and then, you know, every four years, they rotate through our corridor of the state, and then, we could, of course, look at those again and see what the change is. Like Jeff mentioned, some of them won't be apples-to-apples comparisons, but in terms of a four-to-three lane conversion, that would be sort of an apples-to-apples comparison, where you see what happened before, and then what happened after.
Right.
You have to exclude some things like the actual grade separation itself from the tracks and other collisions that just couldn't occur anymore, but certainly, those are things that would be done.
It's the four-to-three lane conversions that I'm thinking of, and also, what I'm hoping is our bike lane, our implementation of our Bike Master Plan will also reallocate existing roadway. And I think it will be, I'd like to go into those projects, hoping we can, and this gets into kind of the next topic, which would be the, you know, the design specifications, but that we will see with a reallocation of the roadway, a decrease in the number of crashes and fatalities and injuries.
Yeah.
I think John makes a good suggestion, especially since we're talking about performance measures, measures of how successful the policy is. So, I think if it's applied to streets that have been revised, it makes complete sense to do this kind of thing.
I agree.
I mean, my observation has been there's fat in our roadways, so I understand where, you know, what Jeff's point is, but I do feel there are real opportunities on our existing streets, which seem to have excess capacity to redesign them.
Sure.
Without getting into major CIP projects to reduce, you know, the collisions and...
Yeah, definitely.
I'll give an example from last summer. Last summer, we had a review of the performance of the proposed four-to-three, not proposed, but something we're evaluating, the four-to-three conversion on Gilbert. And there was a ranking, I think, from A, B, C, and D. When you rank, as I understood those rankings, those rankings were on the likelihood or how well the cars got through the intersection and the amount of time they would have to wait.
Correct.
Does that ranking, because I know you already collect the accident data as well, does that include the safety factors as well? Because I think, to John's point, I think one of the things that's sort of overwhelming on the four-to-three conversion is the pretty high probability that you're going to get a reduction in crashes. So, as you rank those, I guess it's more of a question rather than a comment, does that include that data in terms of the anticipated reduction in injuries if you have a four-to-three conversion?
Yeah, I think it does, because we get percentages. You know, we know approximately what to expect as a percentage of a reduction in collisions. So, you know, so we could translate that into a number for any number of corridors, like First Avenue, four-to-three lane conversion. You know, we could have said there was maybe 100 collisions in the last 10 years or last five years, whatever the measure was. And then, we know, you know, you expect, I think it's like a 30% reduction, in the state of Iowa, anyway, for a reduction in collisions. So, thereby, we could say, you know, now we've got 60 collisions or 70 collisions, whatever it might be.
Because if the cars are going faster, in one sense, they may be performing better, but that has an impact essentially on the...
Right.
Does it take into account that when you do the three-lane conversion, that people drive through neighborhoods are different? So, there could be accidents within the area that aren't on that same street anymore, but moved somewhere?
Right. A good study will. And that's part of what the Gilbert Street study right now, I mean, that's something that the consultant will definitely look into, is diversion, because that's what we don't want, is to start converting traffic down neighborhoods that they should not be in. Gilbert Street is an arterial street, and we should make it as comfortable as we can, but we also don't want to start pushing that traffic places where it should not be. Yeah. So, that's something we definitely take into consideration.
Going back to Terry's point, is that something that we've done as far as follow-up for the First Avenue project? Because I know, for me, I just go around. So, I know I am one of those people that drives slowly through neighborhoods.
Right. So, we've got the collision numbers before, and we're waiting for the DOT to do the after counts. I mean, we can do them this year, but our traffic speed and counts are always slightly different than theirs. It's a different mechanism we use.
And it's only been...
Yeah, we have a lot of that data.
It's been one year so far?
Yeah. Not even, really, since it was completed, so...
I know every time I've driven on First Avenue since it was converted, I've had no difficulty whatsoever in driving on the street.
My guess is you're not driving, at least from what I'm hearing anecdotally recently, you're not driving through when southeast is opening or closing, because just recently, I have run into a number of people who are really, they're not happy. I mean, they're saying it's really backing up the traffic. So, that was a question I was going to ask, like with those measures that we had, that Rockne was talking about with Gilbert, in terms of how well the traffic is moving through those intersections. I just don't recall, was that, that was actual data? I mean, that was actual measures that were taken of how long it was taking cars to get through?
Right. So, there's two different things. The level of service, I think that Rockne was discussing, was the actual intersection level of service. So, that's the anticipated delay, or it's the modeled delay at each intersection. So, if you get to intersection A, you can expect to wait for 20 seconds, that's a level of service A. If you can expect to wait for, you know, 80 seconds, that's a level of service F. The other thing we can do is travel time studies, and they did this for Mormon Track and First Avenue, where they actually traveled the corridor, and they do it a number of times. They do it like 10 times at different points in the day. And then, when they use that level of service per intersection, they try to calculate what the difference will be. So, if it was, you know, two years ago when it was a four-lane road, and if it took four minutes to get from Bradford to the highway, they then can try and estimate what the travel time for the corridor will be under a three-lane condition. And they've done that for Mormon Track, and they'll do that for Gilbert as well. So, we try to get an idea of really how much more congestion there is. There's always a little bit more, you know, in a four-to-three lane conversion, but how much more, and whether or not that trade-off is there from, say, if it's four minutes in scenario A, and it's four minutes and 30 seconds in scenario B, is that, you know, a trade-off that we're willing to accept? So, they do both those things.
And it's worth remembering the overall purpose of the Complete Streets policy. It's not just about automobile traffic.
Right.
It's about pedestrians, it's about bicyclists, it's about buses, it's about automobiles, which we all drive.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that's, again, that's the distinction between the Complete Streets policy, because really, when we look at a corridor under our Complete Streets policy, we want to sit down and discuss who are those modes? You know, who are those folks and what modes do they need? If we decided on First Avenue there weren't any bikes, or there shouldn't be any bikes, then that then comes through the design process in saying, okay, we're not going to obviously design the street for bikes. In the case of First Avenue, we sat down and said, this makes complete sense. One, to reduce collisions. Two, then, of course, to accommodate bikes and peds in a much safer and more comfortable way. So, that's kind of that distinction again. You know, Complete Streets policy is trying to figure out who we're trying to accommodate, and where they're going, and how we're going to do that. And then, when we get into design, that really gets in the nuts and bolts of how to do it safely and efficiently.
And are we weighing the modes equally? So, in other words, are we weighing motorists' convenience, pedestrian convenience, and cyclist's convenience? Because it does seem to me that in some cases, we're primarily focused on the automobile to the detriment of the other two. Are those equally weighted?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, yes, I think they are. We don't weight them from the get-go. We really just sit down and say, okay, who needs to be in this corridor? If that corridor, we know, has five pedestrians a day, we probably will ultimately weigh it more towards the automobile or transit, or whatever it might be. But then, you've also got to think, in our case, too, if you build it, will they come? You know, if you build a better sidewalk, will you get 100 pedestrians a day, or, you know, whatever that number might be? So, it's a little hard to judge that. So, I don't think we really weigh them. It's just through the thought process and the planning and design process, we try to get that mode split right.
Going back to Jim and Rockne's comments, you know, from that standpoint, I mean, because you're right, you know, measuring modalities is super important, but, you know, from that standpoint, even looking at the dedicated bike lane that's on First Avenue, I mean, it doesn't tend to seem like it'll get a lot of use. However, is that a safety issue? Because I think that's been brought up before, as far as, you know, do people feel uncomfortable with it kind of being, I don't know the technical term for it, but kind of naked entryway between both bicycle and the car? And I wouldn't drive there, or ride my bike there. And so, one of the things I was thinking of that totally maybe gets us off-base, and maybe I'll just make the comment, and we don't have, we can move forward, or move forward, for me at least, is thinking about how we're splitting those streets. And so, in the sense that there was a way that the dedicated bike lane could be inside of the sidewalk or some type of barrier, it just seems like, from people I'm hearing, that that is, I would say, the only way that they're going to feel comfortable riding their bike. Outside of that, I feel like we're just making bike lanes to make bike lanes, and we're not really getting people on the road that really want to get on there.
Right. No, those are good points. I think we have to remember, too, for First Avenue, when the consultant came to us and when we came to the council, really, First Avenue was to reduce collisions. We had a Transportation Safety Improvement Program grant, I think it was a half million dollars, for that particular corridor, because the collision rate was so high. So, really, when we did that four-to-three lane conversion, if we wanted to, we could have left the bike lanes off the street altogether. But really, that conversion was meant to increase motorist safety. And then, what happens is, then, you have this extra street width you can use. So, really, that's when it was sort of the addition of bike lanes. And I think in a case like First Avenue, you've got a couple things going on. One is that we don't have a lot of good connectivity to First Avenue right now, so it's a little bit of, you know, you kind of put something out there that doesn't have a lot of good connectivity to it, so you wonder how many people are going to use it. The other thing about bike lanes is, you know, I've got children. I wouldn't put my children on First Avenue. I mean, that's just the truth. But it's an arterial street, and it's more meant for me, I think, who would ride on it and does ride on it. So, you know, it's personal choice. I mean, ultimately, you're right. I think having a separated facility altogether is probably the safest and most effective way. But there are some pitfalls to that. One's cost, two is, you know, do you actually have the right-of-way to be able to do something like that and that sort of thing. In the Bike Master Plan that the council adopted very recently, there are some cycle tracks and things that are similar to that that are in there, but they're things that we're going to have to deliberate pretty heavy later on, again, because of costs and other considerations.
Excellent response, Kent. And can you say, one thing I'm thinking about is, the sense of safety largely depends on the speed of the traffic. If the traffic's going, I don't know, 45 miles an hour or 40 miles an hour, it's pretty hazardous regardless of whether or not you're a skilled bicyclist or not.
That's a good point.
But if it's going 25 miles an hour, the sense of safety increases dramatically. And the injury, severity of injuries declines dramatically the lower the speeds are. So, that's a crucial part of all this.
Yeah, I would say speed is at the core of it, and there are, I don't know if I've shared these with council, but graphics which depict, you know, the likelihood, if you're hit at 20 as a pedestrian, you have a chance of 1 in 10 fatality. If it goes up to 30, it's 50% fatality. At 40, it's 9 out of 10 fatality.
Well, and to, kind of to that point, because I don't necessarily know that, and maybe Rockne, your question was answered, because I think Rockne was asking whether or not, you know, I think maybe I understood it differently, when he was asking about that A, B, C determination that I think that during that council meeting, I was like super focused in on. And we're talking about how we are at council weighing these different options. Is there a grade or a model that basically weighs these different options? Or are we left to kind of decipher from looking at different data whether or not it's working or not?
Yeah, you know, there are things out there, but I think it's the latter. I think it's really, every situation's unique, and there's trade-offs. And that's one thing that I've learned thus far in my profession, is that no transportation fix is going to make everyone happy. I mean, it just, it can't happen. There's one side that's all about expediency, and, you know, they don't walk and they don't bike. The other side's the exact opposite. So, every corridor, yeah, I don't think there's a real, there's not a matrix, I think, that you can look at, really. It's really taking all considerations into account, all the modes, and that's really where I think the Complete Streets policy is good. And again, you know, that's something that I think the city's really, for the last decade or more, done a really nice job of, and it's starting to show, I think, around town. You know, when I went to college, I think about what the street system was like, and it was much different than it is today. And I think it's getting better and better because of policies like this and because councils that, you know, put some weight behind it.
So, one of our strategic plan objectives was to, I've forgotten the verb, I don't know, consider the Complete Street policy. So, that's why we're revisiting it.
No, I don't think it was included in the strategic plan. I think it's come up a couple of times, and it came up at the last council meeting. I think Councilman Thomas requested that we give an overview of the Complete Streets policy, in addition to the SUDAS concept that we had presented.
Okay.
But certainly, you can take it up at any time. We're happy to...
I must be remembering something else, so I apologize about that.
We talked about it, but I think we pulled it out, because it was already in process.
Yeah, there was an idea, Mayor, when the strategic plan was adopted, to do a Complete Streets project. And there was some funds we actually budgeted for a Complete Street project. And at the last council meeting, we scratched that from the pending list, in part because that's really what we're doing with the Gilbert Street corridor, is we're taking a good look at that, and eventually, you guys will make a go-no-go decision on that.
Okay. Anything else we want to say about this particular topic?
I would just briefly say that, in an overarching sense, having just spent 10 days in the San Francisco Bay Area, I think it's important to kind of keep, for me, anyway, to keep a sense of the context that we're dealing in, dealing with respect to traffic and congestion. I always remember talking to Connie Champion some years ago, and she said, you know, John, this is a 10-minute town. And by and large, it is. I know that maybe it's an 11-minute town now, I'm not sure, but compared to the Bay Area, the situation, the congestion here is so light that one reason a person might choose to live here would be the lack of congestion. So, I always have to kind of, you know, when I hear people complain about traffic here, I just think, what do you expect? You know, we live in an auto-oriented culture, but given the size of this place, congestion is relatively low. And anything we do to slow down traffic isn't going to result in a 30-minute trip across town. So, for me, that's sort of the starting point. I really feel that one of our great assets as a city is that we can, I think, seriously approach this idea of promoting walking and bicycling as an alternative to driving and do it safely and conveniently. In San Francisco, when I was there, I thought, they are aggressively promoting bicycling, but I'm not sure I'd want to get on the roads here. I mean, it was just, you know, I just felt it would be too dangerous. So, I hope we, you know, in the spirit of this place, that, you know, I think we can adjust the, you know, the way in which we move about town in a way where everyone, you know, again, it's that everyone's going to get something, no one's going to get everything approached, that I think should work for us.
Okay.
I think the important thing to take away as we transition with the Complete Streets policy is, as you see projects, road projects come before you, you should be able to look at those designs or ask us about those designs, and have us point out exactly what Complete Streets elements are being infused into these projects. And Kent showed a couple of there. And we're not outbuilding new roads a whole lot, but we do, and we have some big ones coming up. But every street should have that Complete Streets element, and we should be able to articulate to you what those are. Even, you know, a street like Washington Street that we redid a couple years ago, we made changes to the way parking was. We have parallel parking on both sides.
We did neck downs at intersections and those types of things. That should be a conversation that we're having. And if, if we're not being clear when we bring these projects forward, then, then you need to let us know. And certainly if we're not taking it far enough, it's your prerogative to step in and tell us that.
I'm remembering what I was thinking about when I referred to the strategic plan. It's simply our previous list of pending work session topics. And the title of that topic was determine scope of council identified complete street study. So I'm just wondering if there's anything else we need to do with regard to that particular topic, given what Kent has just told us. So I think the answer's no, other than a couple of recommendations which we seem to favor.
Do you want us to bring back this policy to you with the added performance measures?
Yeah.
Do I hear, am I seeing nodding heads? Yeah.
The, the other piece again is, you know, I'm interested to hear the SUDAS presentation, but the critical element in my view is if we, if we're adopting this policy, the next step then is what are the standards by which we can ensure that outcome? And that's where I feel there's been a disconnect. And so I'll be interested to.
We'll transition on that note to SUDAS.
Yeah, okay. Ron, are you going to deal with this?
Thank you.
Thank you Kent.
Hold up, John, don't. That yes was for the complete streets project, not the, now the SUDAS conversation comes.
Yeah, I'm just joking.
Good evening, Ron Kentucky Public Works Director. You know, this, this is a project, as far as SUDAS goes, it's something I've been involved in basically since I started as city engineer. So it's been, it's been ongoing for quite a while. So let's kind of go through kind of what it is, the why and the how. You know, what does SUDAS, the pronunciation there, what does it stand for? Statewide Urban Design and Specifications. So we have, we have a design aspect, so that's the design guide. And then there's a construction specification standpoint, that's the specifications piece. You know, it's, it's a statewide standard for urban public works improvement projects in Iowa, a voluntary. It's not a requirement. These are, it's, it's an opportunity for anybody, any size, to be able to use these standards to develop their projects. The way it sits today, it's actually owned by a nonprofit corporation and it has a board of directors. I sit on that board of directors as a, from our District 6 APWA group, but it's, it's from folks all across the state. The INTRANZ, Institute for Transportation at Iowa State University actually operates the SUDAS group. And as far as I know, this is the only statewide standard in the country. So Iowa is kind of the forerunner in regards to this development. The history behind it, so this actually started in the Des Moines area. So Des Moines got together with their surrounding communities and started developing their, kind of their core design standards and construction specifications. Along with that, they hired Snyder and Associates to do their management of their organization, their group. In 1995, the governor did a Blue Ribbon Task Force. Basically, it was to look at our road use tax fund and how can we get a bigger bang for our buck? And, and one of the things that they come out of it was a common standard for, for construction in Iowa. And Rick Foss actually sat on this Blue Ribbon Task Force. So, you know, so from the beginning, we've had an involvement in this statewide. In 1998, they actually developed the Central Iowa Committee. There again, that's, that's a group around the, the core metropolitan area in, in Des Moines. And then in 2000, INTRANZ at Iowa State was chosen to kind of take on that development of, of the SUDAS program. 2002, the DOT and the Central Iowa Committee entered into a contract with INTRANZ to start updating and converting to kind of the SUDAS manual. So it's starting to go from that more metro group, kind of their specifics, to more of a statewide organization. 2004, SUDAS was actually created, so that corporation was created. And then in 2005, the Central Iowa Committee actually turned over the documents to SUDAS. So we, you know, so at that point, the board of directors then took on the responsibility for that. And that was a pretty major thing. You know, you had a, a group in, in Central Iowa that was invested in their, their standards and their design guide. And to kind of turn over and give that to a different corporation, that was, it was a really big step in regards to the development. You know, what are the benefits of statewide standards? Is the uniformity in the design and the specifications across the state reduces the contractors' confusion on what they're actually building. You know, you go from an Iowa City to a Corleville, you know, if the standards are completely different, you're always retraining your contractors. And it gives them the ability to make mistakes, so they're going to start bidding in those mistakes into their contract as they're bidding our projects to make up for those things. So it encourages the bidders to be able to have that tighter bid. It, the statewide standard allows for kind of a rapid implementation. So as they, as, as standards are updated, it's not Iowa City having to figure out what Council Bluffs doing. It's kind of all at one time. And it allows both the state, the local government, the local governments to collaborate with the industry, with each other's industry. And, and so you'll see later on that kind of what the makeup of the board is and how that happens. They're going to allow us for us to, our staff to do design versus having to worry about those specifications as we, as we move forward. And then it also allows for, as research occurs in the state of Iowa and across the country, to be infused into those design standards a little bit quicker and move forward, kind of more of a breaking technology as we move forward on things. So the statewide involvement, you know, the users, cities, counties, the DOT, the consultants, contractors and material suppliers. There's, there's been 14 technical committees that have been a part of developing various pieces of the design guides and also the construction specifications. The way Iowa is set up as far as DOT districts, there's six districts in the state of Iowa. Each one of those districts has a SUDAS group that meets to talk about the various things. So as, as new ideas come up in District 4 and Council Bluffs, each one of those districts then has an opportunity to voice their opinion on whether or not they think it's a good change. And then, at the end, it goes to the board of directors and the board of directors votes on whether they're going to bring that into the documents. The board of directors meets twice a year. The, the kind of, the critical piece in regards to the board of directors is the DOT reprints their, their, their pieces in April and October, kind of when those pieces take on. SUDAS updates the manual annually and it's updated with that October publishing of the new DOT specification. So it goes into their electronic research library piece. And, and so it's electronic at that point. You don't have to buy anything, you can get everything online with that. The board of directors, you know, kind of the, the, the big piece that's there, you know, so it's the NPOs. So we have, you know, so, so for, for us specifically, we have a representative from APWA, that's myself. And then we also have a local representative from our NPO and that currently is Scott Larson with City of Corleville. The, each one of the district chairs sits on the board of directors, county engineers, consulting engineers, DOT staff, and then the larger population communities actually get an additional three folks as far as representatives go. And then from an advisory standpoint, AGC, FHWA, DNR, the payment associations, they all have a seat at the table. They're not voting members, but they can at least have an opportunity to voice their concerns as new things come before the board of directors.
Ron, are there 38 or more board members? Am I reading correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, in the involvement over time, we've had over 300 people that have been involved in the, the development of these specifications across the state. And so there, I mean, it's, you know, it, there's been a lot of time and effort put into the development of these, of these standards. And, you know, as you look at kind of the, the graphic side of things, you know, these are locations where people have an actual hard copy of the specifications sitting in their office. So, you know, not only are we seeing it in Iowa, we're seeing it in, you know, the entity around us also and, and the other states around us locally. You know, there's, there's 325 standard specifications around, so that's the construction piece. There are 700 design manuals out there. Every city in the state of Iowa with a population over 15,000 received a free set. So I mean, that's, that's kind of where things started off at. There's, there's not a real count of who actually has adopted these things because it's adopted in various manners. But because it's voluntary, and there again, the consultants, contractors and material suppliers strongly support the program. It, it kind of, it brings that unit, kind of more of a uniform side of things so that they know what to expect on those projects. And the consultants, obviously, they, they can help develop those things, both for large communities and for the smaller communities. You know, the, the idea for those small communities is, you know, if you have a city clerk that's putting together your asphalt program, whether it's a chip seal program, they have a document that they can actually look to, to help them, help guide them on those things, just as, you know, we, we have the construction specifications for our projects that we can move forward So, you know, the SUDAS piece, there's a couple of different ways things have been funded with SUDAS. Obviously, the, the public agencies in the state of Iowa have, have a vested interest in SUDAS. The Iowa DOT currently funds about 40% of the SUDAS budget annually. It's about $300,000 or so is what, what is actually spent on SUDAS in the state of Iowa. 40% of that is the Iowa DOT and 60% of that is from the cities and counties through the TMA's, NPOs and RPAs. So if, if you've been around long enough, you may recall when we would go through and do our NPO JC budget, some of the STP funds that were pulled off the top went to SUDAS. Now what happens, that happens at the DOT now. So those, those funds are pulled off before any of the, any of those, the transportation groups see it. And then as new research happens, we have the Iowa High Research Board fund some of those projects. The actual, the Iowa High Research Board actually funded a lot of the kind of the kickoff of that research of, you know, what are the benefits of actually going with SUDAS? And that's, and that's kind of, there's those two documents. So the joke, as we started off early on, was in the Central Iowa group, their, their goal was to have basically a book that inspectors could put in their back pocket and take out on the job site. Clearly, we didn't get there. Basically, there's two manuals added, basically a five-inch binder is, is what we're dealing with. So obviously, the design piece is in all the field, but the construction specifications are. So the design manual, there's 14 chapters in the design manual, you know, kind of the general provisions, the stormwater piece. What, what each one of these chapters does is helps guide the designer in what is necessary to be able to design those things. So the stormwater piece, for example, talks about the calculations, what reports they need to submit as a part of their design package. Sanitary sewers, water mains, similar thing. You're, you're looking at what the uses and what the capacity needs are. And, and so, you know, so that, you know, as you work your way through, it just, it gives that guidance for, for, for folks in, in the design of those things. Chapter five, the roadway design piece, we'll talk about that a little bit later. But that actually is where the complete streets piece of the design manual lies. Right now, it's in that chapter five piece. You know, so the, the design manual is the compilation, the information relevant for those designs. It doesn't limit the designer, it gives them the option. So it's really kind of opening up their eyes to what the innovative pieces are out there. Or you have the ability to incorporate those as, as a part of your own design. And there again, it talks about what the requirements are for those plant sets as things are laid out. So there again, it's that uniformity. Contractor knows that, you know, in the U-sheets, which are utility sheets, they know it's going to be in those sheets from, from community to community versus where I may put something on the U-sheet where Corleville puts it on an M-sheet. And so they miss it as they're going through doing their design. Again, it's, it's a menu. It leaves the, the number of decisions up to the engineer as far as the designer. And then it identifies the actions that are needed by the designer to help minimize those confusions for the contractor. And this is an example of that. So, you know, this is talking about pipe fitting. So we're talking about water main, for example. You know, and here you're talking, you have to specify, you know, how you're going to measure various things, you know, what, what the pipe sizes are going to be and those types of things they work through. So, so those are things that it's a reminder to the designer to make sure that they're doing those things to help the contractor as far as the plant set goes. And then it also talks about an example of incidental included items. So there again, it's the uniformity. I may say that the, the pipe bedding is incidental to the pipe installation, whereas another community may pay for that. So it's, it's that confusion of, you know, is the contractor bidding $50 a foot or do they bid it at $100 a foot to try to incorporate those things? And then it also gives us the ability to have a, a bid item list that's more uniform across the state. So, you know, the DOT is very rigid in how they formulate their bid items. For, for municipalities, it's kind of all over the place. So what we don't have a very good ability to do is compare project to project, kind of where things are at across the state as far as bid items. And so it kind of really lays things out for an entity and would be able to compare things in the future. And so, you know, what we've done as far as working with the DOT, there's, there's one chapter in the design standards that is common with the Iowa DOT. So the DOT has their own design guide that they, that they deal with. But the chapter 12 piece of the sidewalks and bicycle facilities is shared. And that currently is the only design chapter that's shared with the DOT. And in that, it addresses the ADA requirement. So that's kind of, you know, the ADA requirements end up being kind of more of a municipal thing. Obviously, the state has highways that are in municipalities, so they've kind of viewed that as kind of the beginning of where we would work together on those things. Construction specifications, so the standard specifications, there's 11 divisions. So, you know, this is where we start getting into how, how we want the contractor to build things for us. Every one of the specifications is set up in a three-part format. There's a general, part one is general, kind of talking about what the work is, the requirements, how we're going to pay for it. Part two is the products, talking about what they can actually install. And then part three is the executioner, what the expectation is by us when you're installing it in, out in the field. So there again, the measurement of payment, this is telling how we're going to pay for things. Part two is, in this case, we're talking about PVC water main or sanitary sewer in this case. So, you know, what, what they're required to supply as far as the products and then how they're going to install it. And so these are the expectations of, of what we would have for them. So, you know, as, as they bid it and this is the way they're doing it, our inspectors then will also be looking at this and making sure they're installing it as they bid it. So common SUDAS and Iowa DOT specifications. So what, what's, what's happened is, as, as we've been going down this road of SUDAS and the DOT specifications, the DOT has determined, you know what, there are some areas that it doesn't make sense for us because of the projects that we do versus what a municipality does to have two separate specifications. So now the DOT uses, for example, sanitary sewers, their specification they have in their book is the same specification that SUDAS has. So it gets updated annually on those things, same as traffic signals. So, so these are the items that as, as, when a contractor bids a state job, they're, they know that the SUDAS specifications are what they're going to be going by. With this project, they're, they're a common figure. So the DOT had a bunch of design standards, standard drawings that they would use. We've now combined SUDAS and the DOT figures together. So it's, we're referring to the same things when we're going through on those projects. And there again, it's the, the collaboration with the DOT, you know, even though, even if we can have one specification and, and the, the kind of the kicker is, because of the DOT and the way that their, their funding is, is done through the, through the federal government, there's just things that we can't combine them all and just work out of one book, which would be great. And so, but, but what we can do is, is we can implement things and we can share things. And that's kind of what, what I've talked about with, with the, having the same design guides and then also the construction standards. And then obviously, the updating piece is the, the process. You know, so I come across something that I want to incorporate into my project, I have the ability to do that, but if I think it's something that everybody wants to be looking at, then I can, I can propose that to SUDAS as far as updating that piece of it. So it goes then before the technical committee, there's some review, discussion at each of the district meetings. And then from there, there's a recommendation that goes to the board of directors and the board of directors would vote on that change and that updating process. So it's, it's constantly being updated, you know. So, you know, in, in 1995, when Rick was sitting on the Blue Ribbon Task Force, he started going through and developing a common standards for, for Iowa City to have. And it was Iowa City, Corleville, North Liberty and Solon. Well, so that happened, but then it kind of, it gets stagnant because it, that took a lot of time to do that. Where here, it's not on us to, to be the updating piece. It's kind of upon all the users to be that updating piece. So, you know, so kind of the, one of the things, and I'm going to go into the roadway design a little bit. So the complete streets piece is one that, right now, you know, locally, Corleville, North Liberty are using SUDAS. So we use the SUDAS piece and the, and the specifications piece. So we're using that for the construction piece, various pieces of it. Cedar Rapids hasn't moved to SUDAS yet, but the complete streets piece of the SUDAS manual really is built off of what Cedar Rapids has developed when Jeff Speck was, was there a few years ago, kind of looking at things. And so we're kind of working together on, on that piece. So there, even though we can't be common, you know, we're, we're working together to be, sharing that knowledge. So there again, you know, the complete streets piece, you know, in the past, obviously motor vehicles is what we talked about, right? Numbered lane was, were all based on future forecasts. You know, you, you look at a Sycamore Street, you look at Keokuk, you know, south of Highway 6, you have four-lane streets out there that, you know, it was all based on what that future growth was going to be. And so, and then the functional classification and then the integration of the pedestrian bicyclists was not always a high priority in the past. You know, so now the complete streets is, it's a major discussion point as we're moving forward. The complete street design, we're talking about safe access, all modes, pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users. And, and there again, we're dealing with over 700 communities nationwide and 20 in Iowa that have, over 20 in Iowa that have now formally adopted that complete streets policy that Kent was talking about. You know, there's no one answer, but there again, is, we're looking at it based on the needs of all the users and for the land use that's in that area. And those are the, the complete streets that have been adopted. So, you know, the complete streets, you know, is, is the context that's the design, you[1794.63] So, you know, the complete streets, you know, is the context that's the design, you know, Kent talked about that. You know, we're going to take into account a lot of factors, number of types of users, available right-of-way and adjacent land use, available budget, the parking needs of the community desires. The context piece, you know, we're talking about rural versus urban, larger cities versus smaller cities, you know, neighborhoods versus commercial areas, and that's a land use piece as far as the large tracks. And there again, are less effective in encouraging the walking and the biking trip. So, we're working through those things. Design standard guidelines for complete streets involve the discussion of various aspects of, including ASHTO, which is, you know, what, basically that design standard that we were all trained on working on as engineers and were in school, and what the DOT, you know, really was hammering home on us. Safety liability, METCD. So, you know, so these are the pieces that were, that are involved in the discussion as we're moving forward. The standards, you know, some are standards, others are guidelines. METCD, the Manual Uniform Traffic Control is a requirement, that's federal law, the state of Iowa has adopted that. So, anything that we do in regards to signage, whether it be traffic signals, all that is controlled by the METCD. Different standards for federal and state highways compared to local streets. Guidelines generally have ranges to consider, you know, we've talked about that a little bit. But in the end, you know, our, the standard that we have as engineers, and as far as the municipality goes, is, you know, if we can say that we've designed a road to the design of the time, and we get sued, you know, because of something that's happened, we have some indemnity there. Now, that's, so that's the whole, the premise of having these design guides that are, you know, accepted across the state, and as a part of the industry goes. So, the elements included in the design guidance, obviously, you know, there's the land use, functional classifications, speeds, you know, the discussion of, do you design for five miles above the posted speed, do you design for the speed? And then the vehicle design, you know, large trucks, as far, that's where the turning radii come in. Obviously, for us and like in our community, we're looking more along the buses and how we accommodate those things, and to a degree, the fire equipment that we're using. Lane widths, you know, vary from nine to 12 feet. And the impacts of those, as far as the capacity, is minimal, but, you know, we've talked about the too wide, and it encourages speeding, but then we also have to make sure that with those lane widths, we can accommodate the traffic going beyond those, whether it be on a bus route, whether it be on a truck route, as we move forward on those things. The curb radii, obviously, the wider the radius, the easier it is for a truck to turn on it. Obviously, the wider it is, the larger it is, the more difficult it is for a pedestrian to get across the street in a timely manner. The bicycle facilities, non-street parking, sidewalks, you know, the pro-lag piece as far as ADA, and then the connectivity is critical for the users. Turn lanes, two-way left turn lanes, the medians as far as the pedestrian refuse, transit systems, and the traffic signals. I think one of the larger discussions right now is that crossing phase, how long does it take somebody to get across? You know, three feet per second is kind of what the standard is, 2.7 feet is what the recommended is, and then the ADA elements as they go into those traffic signal pieces. And so, you know, what we're seeing, whether it be in this photo, a buffered bike lane, or we're dealing with actual, an off-site or, an off-site separated bike lanes in that photo. And then I'm going to, Jason's going to come up and actually talk about where we're at in the process of adopting this, and kind of what the next steps are going to be for us.
All right. So, wanted to kick things off here. This slide just kind of lays out sort of the standard process, I guess, we're using to adopt these manuals. Just a reminder, you know, we're talking about two different manuals. On the design side, that's everything from, you know, street lane widths, but also it's intake spacing, that kind of stuff. So, it's all the stuff on sort of the front end of the project design. And then the specifications are really what happens in the field. So, when you're, you know, installing water main, what are going to be your backfill requirements, that kind of stuff, that's really more the construction-based items. So, with this, kind of how we kick things off, we take each manual kind of separately, and we look at what does SUDAS include, and then what do our current standards or design manual include? And really kind of put them side by side, and look at, is there stuff we're doing now that maybe SUDAS doesn't have that we want to add? Is there additional details that we want to add to SUDAS? You know, there's some parts of SUDAS that are a little less specific to give you that flexibility. So, we're kind of seeing, what are we doing now, what works? We want to make sure we continue that. If there's stuff that's in SUDAS that we think might be a better fit, we can continue to, or we can implement that as well. So, that's kind of what this second point talks about, is, you know, making those changes and those revisions, and with that, we would then put together either supplemental specifications or modifications to the design manual to basically be sort of our version of SUDAS. So, it would be kind of taking that standard, but then also, I guess, sort of personalizing it for Iowa City. And then, at the end of that, would then be adoption by city council. We would bring it back to you and ask for you guys to adopt that. As far as the typical adoption schedule, it's not uncommon that for the process to take a year or more, and I think we're pretty much right on track with that. You know, we really kind of started taking a look at this probably last winter, really kind of sitting down and getting into the meat of the material. And so, I think we're pretty close to on schedule with that at about a year. So, specifically talking about the specifications manual, and I'll talk about that one first, because that one's a little more straightforward, that really is more to do with kind of public works, and that really is, again, dealing with the stuff in the field. So, that's installing water mains, sewer, you know, building streets, that kind of stuff. What we've done is, we've sort of completed our reviews, we've kind of sat down and said, what does SUDAS have? What do our current specifications have, and what do we want that to look like for adoption? So, we've kind of gone through, completed our review, and so now, we're kind of pulling that together, getting to the point where we can get that supplemental specification document ready to kind of get our version of the specification manual ready for adoption. And we're looking at February of 2018, so this coming February, for having that ready for your consideration. The design manual is a little more, I don't know if I'd say complicated as much as it involves other departments a little bit more. You know, when you start talking about stormwater and street design, you know, you start getting into development side of things, you start getting into neighborhood and development services, and how that all kind of fits together. So, I think this one is likely to take a little bit longer, again, just kind of having those conversations with a larger group and more departments as we work through it. We're at kind of a similar spot, I guess, as far as our review, as public works, we've kind of sat down, reviewed a lot of that. And when I say it's complete for public works, what I really mean is, you know, more on the water main and sewer side of things, where it's really the utility stuff. I think we feel pretty good about it. Our next step really is to kind of broaden that scope and start talking to other departments and figuring out, you know, again, what does Neighborhood and Development Services have to say about some of this, and City Manager's Office? And having those larger conversations to get to the point where we all feel comfortable with what either additions or changes we need to make to those manuals. And so, like I said, the design manual modifications are ongoing. With that, I think that one will be a little bit further behind, and so, we're saying April of 2018 is when we anticipate having that ready for you guys to take a look at. And with that, that kind of ends sort of the SUDAS portion of the presentation, so certainly can open that up to questions.
Well, Ron and Jason, thank you so much. I think we're all very happy that you're doing the work and we aren't. I don't think we're prepared to do any of that, and it's pretty impressive to see what you all are having to deal with. But I think there are some concerns having to do with roadway design and having to do with stormwater runoff. Those are the two that I've heard, in any event. So, I don't think we have much interest in talking about the whole thing, which you all need to deal with, it's really important, we trust that you're doing great work, et cetera. But we do have some concerns about those two elements, and I don't know if everybody wants to talk about all of them tonight, but maybe we could deal with roadway design first and just see what thoughts people have about that, and then get some feedback from the two of you about it. So, John, I know you have thoughts about this.
Yeah, I mean, this is something I've been concerned with ever since moving to Iowa City, and it seemed to kind of coincide with a great deal of work in the traffic engineering world in terms of looking at street design standards. Jeff Speck's Walkable City, I think, came out in, I want to say 2012, something like that. Dan Burden's work. We've had these folks come to town. Dan, Jeff, Jay Wall Jasper, a number of people have come to town, and I would have to say that they all point, their suggestions, the Blue Zones report, all point toward a certain set of design standards that, in their view, and I would share their view, would result in a better synthesis of walking, bicycling, and driving. And in fact, and this I found encouraging, I discovered the Des Moines MPO, Des Moines Area MPO, published Mobilizing Tomorrow: A Transportation Plan for a Greener Greater Des Moines. It was adopted in 2014 and amended in 2015. And in the technical section of that document, they talked about a complete streets policy at the MPO level, as well as at the local level. I think our local MPO policy is pretty solid with, you know, a few suggestions and more in the measuring aspect. But the technical section also included recommended design, roadway design standards. And those standards were based on principles of facilitating movement and socialization of people. That street should be designed to create high-quality public spaces that have a positive influence on the built environment. And, you know, there are more than half a dozen different design standards. I referenced them back in March in that memo to council, things like travel lanes, sidewalks, corner radii, on-street parking, trees, and so forth. They're all critical elements, in my view, in terms of ensuring that, you know, when we design, say, our bicycle network, Kingsley will write on it. I mean, I think he will be our litmus test, you know? And so, these standards become critical, because if we don't want to expand the scope of a project to include realigning the curbs, we have a certain set dimension, and so, the degree to which travel lanes can be reduced to create space for the bicycle lane, perhaps even with a buffered bicycle lane, I think that increases the comfort and safety, not only bicyclists, but pedestrians, as well as drivers. I've become convinced, through looking at the collision data, that, you know, the existing conditions aren't working well even for drivers. You know, a lot of collisions, $11 million in property damage just in the last three, or 2013 to 2015. So, I'll just give an example of the language in the, in this MPO. So, we're talking Iowa, it's all under SUDAS, it's all sort of the world we live in in Iowa. And travel lanes, which Speck has, you know, that's his focus, and I think it is important with respect to speed. And it states, "The width of travel lanes has a significant impact on the quality of the public space. Travel lanes wider than 11 feet degrade the public realm. Wider travel lanes increase the speed of vehicular traffic and increase the crossing distance for pedestrians at intersections. The ideal travel lane width for most urban streets with speeds below 35 miles per hour is 10 feet." And that's consistent with Speck's recommendations, the ITE manual for contact-sensitive streets. So, I look at that, and I think, you know, that seems to be the direction the Des Moines MPO is going. I think we, as a city, are looking at, if I'm looking for comparables, I'm looking at Des Moines, and I'm probably looking at Cedar Rapids. You know, we're, in a sense, I feel competing, if you will, with respect to, you know, if we want to attract residents, these are some of the variables that residents are looking at now. So, my suggestion, and, you know, I'm looking at the SUDAS. The SUDAS has a set of standards, they're referred to in the complete streets component. They're recommend, they're shown as preferred, they're not in any way mandatory, and in fact, you know, I think they themselves acknowledge there's a range of standards that can be applied to any given street. But my suggestion would be that we, as a city, begin to seriously look at what we should adopt as our, as a default standard, it might be said, for these variables that go into roadway design. It doesn't mean that they're adopted in every case, but, you know, as what I referenced, that on most urban streets, I think we should find the default standards to be acceptable. So, that's sort of where I think, you know, I think this, it sounds like in terms of your schedule, you're in the process of looking at design manual modifications. I would, you know, urge you to look at the MPO for Greater Des Moines and their recommendations. I think they seem to be current, and I feel it will really help us with our bicycle network design, because it may give us more latitude to improve the safety and convenience of, you know, walking and bicycling than if we, if we stay with what I see to be the standard SUDAS specifications, which end up widening the roadway and making crossing distance greater and speeds higher and so forth.
And I guess, just as sort of a response to that, that would be our intent, I think, is to look at those things and figure out what's going to be the best fit for us. You know, part of the challenge is, you're dealing with not only brand-new construction that runs through the middle of a cornfield for development, but then also, you know, urban corridors where maybe you don't have the right-of-way that you'd like. And so, it's how do you find that balance? But certainly, we can take a look at that and figure out what's going to be best for us for kind of that, your starting point, I would say, for your design.
If I could say, Jason, you know, we're doing this, developing a form-based code, at least that we will eventually consider adopting for the area around Alexander Elementary, so, Cornfield, right? And I think it's absolutely crucial that the design of the new neighborhood drive the street design rather than just the reverse. So, in my judgment, we should not be developing that neighborhood to have more streets like Langenberg, which is so wide that people are driving 42, 45 miles an hour on it until they, you know, neighbors rightly said, this is not safe, we need to have speed humps or whatever, something to calm the traffic. So, it's really crucial that we get our, what are the words I'm after here? Our neighborhood design elements compatible with the roadway design elements, so that they're mutually reinforcing in a way that moves in the direction, policy direction, I believe this council wants to move. And I think we've been pretty clear about it as the last 18 months have gone on. So, if you all can really look carefully at the section John is referring to and other parts of that Des Moines, what is it, MPO plan, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful, because, you know, I mean, that's my judgment about this, and I don't know what other people have to say, I'd be very curious to hear it.
I guess I would echo John and Jim. And I guess the larger issue is, is this topic of lane widths superficially seems like such sort of an arcane topic. It's sort of an esoteric topic in terms of why do we care so much? And I think that's one of the things that Jeff Speck really articulates so well, that the lane width drives speed, and the speed drives nearly everything else, the other modes, people's perception of safety, pedestrian use, bicycle use. And if you look at a lot of the great cities, the width of the streets is a critical factor. And not only that, in the last 10 to 15 years, we've seen a lot of cities who have adopted these narrower standards that have really seen revitalization of their networks. One of the standards that Speck talked about was the NACTO. So, I'm wondering whether either you or Ron could talk about, as it pertains to lane width, how does SUDAS, because the other thing too, is that if SUDAS already addresses what we care about, then we don't need to have as many concerns, but how does NACTO compare with SUDAS as it applies to lane width recommendations? I know there's a lot of variables, but at least Speck seemed to imply that NACTO had more neighborhood pedestrian-friendly design standards.
You can jump in here if you want, but I guess my response to that would be, I think SUDAS gives you flexibility, you know, and I think NACTO does the same thing. Neither one of them is going to tell you, every lane needs to be 10 feet. I mean, they're going to say that there's, you know, again, the contact-sensitive design- I mean, they're going to say that there's, you know, again, the contact-sensitive design, there's different variables that go into this. You know, NACTO tends to be more on the very urban side. And so I think they really focus more on the pedestrian, the bicycle, I mean, really focus on those other modes, maybe a little bit more than the vehicle. I think SUDAS is, they almost seem to be kind of coming from different directions and headed to the same place. So I think SUDAS gives you that flexibility. It allows you to design streets, again, you know, I think it was, what, 9 to 12, maybe even more, for lane width. So it gives you that flexibility. So I don't think it's prohibiting you from doing anything that I've heard here tonight. So I think, again, it's kind of having that conversation of what do we want our version to be? What do we want our standards to be? I think we can get there with SUDAS, and I think it would be a very good document. So I don't think that going with SUDAS prohibits you from incorporating things that are included in NACTO in the least.
And one quick follow-up to that. I guess in terms of my takeaway from night, I would like our design standards to match our, to encourage the posted speed limit. Because I think we see a lot of areas of town where it's posted at 25 and it's designed for 45. I mean, I think, for example, of South Sycamore, Lower Muscatine, those are really wide streets that I think have a posted limit of 25. So that would be my takeaway, and I don't think that that's, you know, I think that should be a reasonable goal that we would try to achieve.
I just have a question on the input from, do you get input from the contractors when you're doing these designs through the state? Is there any practical? I mean, you guys design it, but these guys have to build it. Do they give you any ideas on what could be done better as well? Or is there any, any input from outside sources?
Well, I think there's some contractor input on the, the SUDAS board. Again, they're not voting members, but they do have their input there. Routinely, we also get feedback on projects, usually in the complaint department from contractors. But I think there's, there's that constant dialogue of, here's how we designed it, and then maybe what they think could have been better, or how we could have done it better. So I think there's always that evolving from the design.
And they're also involved at the district-level meetings. There's a lot of contracts that actually sit on those committees and give those feedback on those, not necessarily on the design standards piece, it's more on the construction specifications piece.
Right, because they're the ones that end up having to do it.
Right, exactly.
I think what I'm hearing from most of the council that spoke up is, you're, I think, I think you're comfortable with us going forward under the SUDAS umbrella, and I think that's really important from a statewide perspective. But you're interested in that default standard, or maybe even shrinking that 9- to 12-foot flexibility. You don't want, you know, maybe the 9- to 12-foot flexibility is okay, except if we're proven 11-and-a-half-foot lanes 90% of the time, then it's not okay. So I think when we come back to you, we can give you a tighter kind of default standard for different types of streets. And then you can decide whether that's adequate or not.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that we have to keep in mind is when we look at kind of what that cross-section is, back a curb to back a curb, you know, we, in our subdivision code currently, there's a 26-foot standard that's allowable, but 28-foot is all, they can also build a 28-foot wide, you know, back-to-back. So when you look at that, and there's no cars parked on the street, you're looking, you know, at 13-and-a-half-foot lanes, right? I mean, that's what you're looking at.
Exactly. So that needs to be revisited.
Right, well, but, but hardly ever do you not have a local street that has a car parked on it, right? So now, now you have 8-foot of car or 6-foot of car sitting there, and so now you're 20-foot effective, so now you are your 10-foot lanes. Or on a 28-foot wide street where you have parking on both sides, you know, effectively as far as the lane width, there again, you have to have those other side impediments to create that space. But I think, I don't think, I don't, we're not arguing that, that a 12-foot lane is what we should have across our community. I think effectively today, we have much less than that. It's just that it's not striped today, you know? So there's not that delineation of what that lane width actually is. And the other part of it that we have to keep in mind is, not only are the streets, you know, there for the multimodal travel, it's also there to help convey our stormwater. You know, curb and gutter is there, I mean, basically that's our ditch, right? So we have to be able to convey the stormwater in those areas and not have it be a major impact to the traffic, not only from the standpoint, if you make them too narrow and the cars are always running that gutter line, anybody, you know, on the side of the street is going to get splashed every time by a car driving by them. You know, so there's that part of it that we have to consider. And then the other part of it, obviously, is, in the winter, when we're out plowing snow, you know, we have to be able to get our equipment through to be able to plow those streets. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces that go, but there again, I think that, you know, the 9-foot to 12-foot, you know, 11-foot, 10-foot, wherever we land at, I think that we can accommodate that. Maybe not in every aspect, on every street that we're looking at, because obviously we have to deal with, you know, with the bus corridor, whether it's, you know, and, and we dealt with that in the Dubuque Street project, you know, in the Gateway Project, and looking at the various pieces of where we're going to be at on that as far as lane width go. So there's, I mean, it really is, it's a big-picture discussion, and there's a lot of things that go into it. And I think, you know, when, when you look at the Complete Streets piece that SUDAS has identified, NACTO is one of the design guides that they reference within that Design Guides piece. So, you know, the reference is there. And so, you know, there again, it gives that designer the idea of, okay, well, if I need more guidance here, I can go to this document and help me, you know, get to my decision.
I think Rockne's Rule of Thumb is very useful here. My sense is the roadway should be designed to have people drive the speed limit. If the speed limit is 25, the roadway should signal to drivers, that's the speed limit. Not expect police to enforce it, not expect, whatever, I mean, roadway design. So that's a really useful Rule of Thumb, I think.
Yeah, and that's perception of the driver's risk. It's tied to a lane width, it's tied to, is there on-street parking, how many intersections intersect the road one is driving on, a whole range, topography. But that is the key. And just, for example, again, the SUDAS, and we see it in our traffic calming program, says, okay, if the speed is posted at 25, 30 is okay. You know, so, so straight off, right?
Right. And there again, as we've talked about, I mean, based on the input tonight, I think what we're hearing is, if it's posted 25, that's what the design speed is, is 25 miles an hour, right? And I think there again, that, that's one of those things that we can incorporate into those design standards as we move forward. Now, and, and we work through those things. So I think clearly, I think we can set that design speed easily, you know, wherever we want to be at, whether it be, you know, if it's equal, that's what we'll go with, so.
Okay, anything else? Anybody?
I think for me, I'm interested more in the process and how you're coming back to us. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to sit here and say that I have any knowledge of, like, road design or, you know, lane width or anything along those lines. You know, obviously, everybody knows I'm a speed driver. And so, like, when we're talking about changing speeds, you know, I start to cringe a little bit. I mean, if anything, as far as the Rule of Thumb is...
Are you going over the speed limit?
Well, I would just say that, you know, if anything, if we're talking about, you know, the Rule of Thumb, you know, just change the speed limit to be higher, and then make the, you know, design guidelines match those. But for me, at least for me, from an input and process standpoint, I would just want to know that we had, there was enough time or space to get that feedback. I'm not sure how it would come back for us, or to us, and wanted to make sure that we had enough time to kind of reach out to people. And then for me, one of the things that really kind of changed my mind about the conversation, I can't remember who it was, maybe it was Speck, but having those pictures that kind of spoke to what exactly we're talking about with these changing road designs, because, I mean, what you said at the end there, when talking about how the, the lane width has to accommodate some other things as far as, you know, people parking in streets, or people parking on a local street, or whatever the case may be, is something that I would not have thought about without you saying something, but it's something that I, I frequently drive through every single day. And so it's an important kind of accommodation that we have to think about, that, I'm not saying have a picture for every single thing that you, you know, list on here, but, you know, at least some type of guidance for somebody like me that just doesn't have the same type of knowledge or acumen around this particular topic, so I have just a better understanding.
Okay, I'm very conscious of the time. I know that Julie was going to do the third piece of this presentation, right? So...
One thing I do want, you had talked about stormwater management. And, and, you know, and I think, you know, where we're at, you know, I think there's been discussions amongst the community that our standards are 40-years-old or wherever, whatever number's been stated. You know, basically, where we stand at today with our stormwater management ordinance, we release, I think our stormwater management ordinance is very comparable to what anybody else in the state is using. The difference is the method in the way that, that stormwater runoff is calculated. So, so the Vinti Chao method is, is an old method. That was what was written into our original stormwater management ordinance. That's what we expect our consulting firms to use, to design to today. You know, the stormwater management ordinance within the SUDAS is basically using the rational method. So, you know, the runoff that they're calculating is maybe going to be a little bit less than what the Vinti Chao method calculates. But they, for their, for their stormwater management, they're designing to 100-year storm with a five-year non-developed release rate. That's what they're, that's what they're building all their, you know, those detention basins to. What we are doing currently is 100-year storm, and then we have a 0.15 CFS per, I mean, so we throw an out, we throw a discharge number in there. And as I think we're more restrictive than what the current practice is across the state. And, you know, so in 1996, when Rick was going through and was, was looking at this, it was, the intent was that we were going to change that stormwater management ordinance and to the common practice of the 100-year, five-year. There was enough feedback from the community that we chose not to go in that direction. We maintained what we had existing as far as the stormwater management ordinance. So there again, so when we go to SUDAS, we're looking at the 100-year, five-year is what we're looking at, to going to. That would, we'll have to update our ordinances within our code to be able to go to that, you know, go in that direction. But that's something we will weigh out and see what impacts that'll have, because I don't think there'll be a huge change in the way things are handled, but I think we are pretty conservative in the way that we do our stormwater management today.
Okay. Thanks for a very enlightening presentation. I think we've all learned a lot more about SUDAS than we ever knew before, and I'm glad you all are doing the work. Thank you.
We're going to stay with Public Works for a couple of projects and then turn it over to Julie.
Yep. So kicking things off here with the Gateway Project, just wanted to give you an update on kind of where we're at. And I tried to put together here kind of approximate milestones, so kind of the, the big steps that are left along the way. You know, currently, the vehicle crossover, so where you're going from the new southbound pavement to the old, is located pretty much in front of Mayflower. The goal would be to basically push that further south down to essentially at the Park Road intersection. We're looking at that being late November, kind of been saying hopefully around the Thanksgiving time is when that would occur. Completion of the bridge, so that would be, the goal there would be summer of 2018, so that would be next summer. With that, once the bridge is complete and able to have traffic on there, there would actually be a road closure that will occur on Park Road, at the Park Road-Dubuque Street intersection. And that's a 60-day closure. The intent is that traffic on Dubuque Street would be maintained, so we would still have one lane each direction on Dubuque Street. They would basically push it all the way to the east as we reconstruct the west half of the intersection. And then, so that would be approximately August 1st to September 29th of next year is what the contractor is saying. Obviously, all of this is weather-dependent, so I think the goal for them, sort of off the record, is to try and get stuff open for start of school. That really banks on a productive winter. So obviously, if weather doesn't cooperate, that's subject to change, but that's kind of where we're at right now. As far as the open-to-traffic item here, that, again, kind of talks about that Park Road intersection. So October 1st kind of being the, when the bridge will be opened and kind of have that west side open, so that would then push the construction to the east side. And so we'd kind of be shifting traffic around there, again, to maintain traffic on Dubuque Street. So basically, that November 2018 is kind of what the contractor is saying for. Everything's open. Again, I think they're hoping it'll be a little bit earlier than that, but that's kind of what the official schedule says at this point.
Jason, can you clarify for me, on the road closure, that 60 days, are you saying we're going to have 60 days, that there will be no traffic from Dubuque Street onto Park Road?
Correct.
Or from Park Road onto Dubuque Street?
Correct. So there'll be through traffic on Dubuque Street, but there'll be no traffic between Park Road and Dubuque Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then final completion, looking at probably spring of 2019. And then just kind of some, some pictures here, kind of the ongoing progress. You know, one of the arches is, is more or less complete as far as construction goes. And then they're working on the second one there, so you can see just the sheer amount of rebar and metal kind of going into all this concrete is pretty amazing. So it's really a unique opportunity to see this project happening right here. So just a number of bridge shots here from different angles, kind of showing just the scope of the, the construction that's ongoing. And then here, just kind of some of the other work, you know, along the Dubuque Street corridor, showing the MSE walls, the riprap that's going in along the river, as well as the, up there in the upper-left, you can kind of see some of the, the street elevation and street changes that are occurring there. That's near the, the Boathouse intersection. So obviously, this is a little behind, is that's now open, at least that portion of it. And then, again, kind of another picture of just the, the look of the MSE wall with the riprap that's been installed. Just want to kind of highlight, again, you know, we've kind of been focused a lot on all the concrete and that kind of stuff that's going in. Also wanted to remind everyone of some of the landscaping that's going to go in with the project, that would likely be next fall, probably once we start getting things wrapped up, have this be kind of towards the tail end of the project. But just the number of trees and shrubs and perennials that are going in with the project, you know, a lot of it focused kind of on the medians with some landscape berms, some trees that will go in with the project. So really, it's, you know, a lot of the landscaping items that will be put in place once we're done with construction as well. That, unless there's any questions, I'll pass it off to Julie for kind of riverfront crossings.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jason. Hi, Julie.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. Update on Riverfront Crossing Park, and I have to preface this, by every time I've done an update on this park to any kind of community group in the last probably two months, someone in the group says, when I said, "This will just, this will be done next week," someone pipes up and says, "Wait, it's done." It is literally moving that fast out there that we're having updates almost every day. Just to take you back through the master plan, oops, sorry. Phase one is what we're working on right now. It includes most of the trails within the park, the parking area, the five-acre wetland, which was part of the original scope of the project with removing the wastewater treatment plant and making this a floodable area. The events area kind of in the northwest corner, and the bridge that crosses at the second-street alignment, and then also the crossing across the box culvert down by Highway 6. Construction just moving like crazy. We're about halfway through the actual construction. I think my slides got a little out of order here. So just some, where, this is the information that's been completed, or the parts that have been completed. So we had the initial master plan wastewater plant demo, base grading, over $6 million for that. Park design for phases one and two has been completed. Park construction phase one, which I just talked through, PCI is working on that. We anticipate it being done by early summer 2018. So you'll see a cover crop seeded across the site, that's growing in right now, but the actual wetland planting and a lot of the other plantings on the site won't happen till spring, but it's coming along quite nicely. And then phase two, we have contracted that to Tricon Construction, and that's largely the nature play area, and that will be completed also by late spring, early summer. They don't expect to start work on the actual playground installation until spring, so probably in, hopefully, late February, early March. One of our grants stipulates that it's done by April 30th, so it'll be quick once they start construction on that. Some funding, or information on through phase two. So 78% of the funding for the work that we have contracted or that is completed at this point has been non-local grant or donated funds. Large part of that is the state hazard mitigation funds that started with the demolition and the moving of the wastewater treatment plant. Then we have the 157,300 federal land and water conservation fund grant, which is on the agenda tonight for acceptance. That is for the nature play area. We received a $50,000 grant from the Disney Corporation and the National Recreation and Park Association, also for the nature play area. And then so far, we brought in 16,500 private... And then, so far, we brought in $16,500 private donations and service club donations, specifically, again, for the nature play area. One private donation was for the limestone area that will get children down to the creek to play in the creek. That was a $10,000 donation. And then, $6,500 from the Noon Pilot Club to add the accessible swing or the accessible seat to the zip lines. We'll have a dual child-sized zip line. Everyone's excited when they hear zip line. It's sized for children, one side for able-bodied kids and one side that has special accommodations for kids that need additional assistance. Still to come, park design phases three and four. This contract is on the agenda later tonight with Confluence, H.R. Green, and Robrock Architects to do the design for the restroom, shelter, lighting throughout the park, signage, and then the river terrace area. And then, below that, I have information on estimates for those two different parts of the project, phase three being the restroom, shelter, lighting, and signage. And then, phase four is the river terrace area. That is kind of like a small amphitheater area right along the Iowa River, along with creek bank work along the river and more additional trails that will let people get closer down to the riverside. A little bit of change from what you saw in the master plan, we'll be shifting it a little bit to the south most likely with design, but that would be a future, probably, phase four. And then, other things that were shown in the master plan that are future phases that are not, do not have design yet. There's a rainwater terrace, which would come from the parking area south to the wetland area. That is some artistic work in there. The artist work in the middle of the traffic circle, so the traffic, parking lot and traffic circle is being put in with phase one, anticipation of some kind of art installation in the middle of that, but that is not included in any of the funding packages at this point. The second bridge crossing to the east, and then Kirkwood Plaza area, so on the northwest side, and then anything else that might happen if we acquire additional land where the city carton site is or beyond that. I wanted to show you this. This is a concept design for the restroom and shelter combination. We were looking at two of these in the next phase of the park development. The lines of it are similar to the buildings that we have at Terry Two Blood, but with a more contemporary twist to it. So, this is, you know, any feedback you might have on this, make sure we hear it soon as we are moving forward in the next part. And the signage would be somewhat based, kind of a combination of this contemporary design and the park signs that you just saw in the park master plan. Photos, you've seen what it looks like out there. It's changing all the time. These are photos from early in the process. The trail along the east side of the park was still there. Then, you see the work on the creek happening on the second photo. So, the entire creek bank has been pulled back on the west side into the park so that we talk about kids having access down to the creek, being able to go play in the mud and the water. We've accomplished that, and that's in the works. This is the site, this picture was taken at the end of August, so it has changed significantly even from this time. But we have over here the large event space. It's slightly higher at the southern edge, meant to be almost like an amphitheater with availability for a stage and performance to be put at the north end. The parking area is just going to the east of it, so the parking circle, and if you'll remember from the design early on, that is being designed so that things like food trucks, beverage trucks, things that would service a large community event in this park are able to pull in. The restroom, one of the restroom shelters would be close to that area and would also house all of the electrical service that we would need to host those large events. Nature play area will be in this area here, if you can see my sign, and then the wetlands area, and I will talk just a little bit more about that. The five acres of wetlands that were created, it's in a horseshoe shape, and the idea is that Ralston Creek will feed those wetlands. It'll come down, it is not going to be a very, much of a water feed through there most of the time. This is more like an inch or two of water coming through the wetlands. They will come down. If you go and look out over the fence from Big Grove right now, you'll see right in this area, a big, what they're calling the waiting pool. It's a rock structure. The water will come into that structure and then gradually feed into the horseshoe area around the wetland. You see burlap around, they call these like dirt burritos, is I think the non-technical term for what they've built. That's stabilizing the sides of the wetland and the creek until it grows in. The idea is the water will flow slowly through there during normal times. If there is a flash rain or a large rain event, there's a structure here that will allow it to flow directly over and miss the wetlands. It won't blow out any of the seeding and the work being done in those wetlands, it will flow directly down to the river. It will be somewhat of a dry wetland in the end, enough water to establish the plants and keep, quote, the wetlands plants, but you won't see a lot of marsh through it most of the time. Kind of interesting process. And the last thing is the bridge, the 150-foot spanned bridge came in a little over a month ago, 150-foot bridge, the largest bridge that's allowed on state highways to come down. It came from Minnesota. Interesting story, it was planned to be here around noon, so we had all kinds of people lined up to go watch it be installed by the crane. They left Albert Lee at daybreak because they had to wait until, they could only travel down the roads as it was light. The truck first broke down by Webster City, and they had to send a new truck from Minnesota. And then, it got a flat tire at Ankeny, so it limped its way in finally around 6:00 that night, and they did go ahead and set it on a Friday night. They had everything ready to go, so the decking has been poured in it. I don't think the approaches have been poured, so it's not quite ready for use, but it's coming soon, so. I'm going to take any questions you might have.
It's good to see you moving along.
It's been a really fun project. I'm so excited to be a part of this.
I go down every couple of weeks or so and look out at it. It's fun to do.
Can we use the bridge now? Is the bridge ready to use?
No.
I always get that question.
Last time I was down there, no. We're waiting on some things happening on the development on the east side, so that they will pour the bridge approaches at the same time they pour the trail along Highway 6, and we're waiting for the water line to go in with Randy Miller's project on the east side of the creek. So, I keep hearing any day now, but I'm not aware that it's been done.
Okay, no. Thank you, Julie.
My last slide, I promise. Just wanted a couple of quick highlights on some of the other projects. Obviously, Davenport Brick Street replacement, two blocks of new Brick Street has been completed, so I think that looks really great if you haven't seen that yet. Just a reminder that out on the Washington Streetscape project, the kiosks have now been installed, so those look really great.
Just noticed it.
Yeah, definitely get out and check those out. And to end things on a high note, the first avenue, great separation, we just received a project of the year award from the APWA Iowa Chapter. So, with that, it is eligible to be submitted for a national award, so we'll go ahead and move forward with that. We also just received notice that we received a project of the year award for the Iowa Concrete Pavement Association as well for that project, so it's now an award-winning project.
All right. Bravo.
Congratulations.
That's all I had.
Great news. Thanks.
Sure.
All right, folks, it's 20 till. We probably don't have any time to get into the rest of the info packet stuff. I think we'll have to do it after a regular formal meeting. So, let's take a break, get back together at 7:00. All right. We stopped.
Info packets.
Wow, where is that? At, yeah, we actually stopped at clarification of agenda items, and I wanted to note a couple of things, I guess. One has to do with item 5D5. It has to do with the resolution amending budgeted positions in the Parks and Recreation Department by deleting a full-time office coordinator recreation position and adding to full-time maintenance worker one forestry positions. So, I'm pleased to see this. I think it will enable us to do more of the tree-related work that we need to do out in the, out in the city. The other thing has to do, Rockney, has to do with 5F2, which is Mark McCallum's email. I just wanted to note that on-street parking in core neighborhoods is a topic for the November 6 work session, so we're going to be addressing that. Anything else with regard to agenda items? Okay, so, information packet discussion for the October 5th packet?
IP 3, I believe that's about the Human Rights Awards Breakfast, which is coming up Wednesday, October 25th, and I'd just like to congratulate all the award winners that were listed in our packet. Particularly, of course, a good shout-out to a good friend of mine, Greg Kearns, well-deserving of the award because he's worked many years of his life fighting for workers' rights. And so, it should be a great event, Wednesday, October 25th, 7:15 for the breakfast, second floor ballroom of the IMU.
Good deal. Anything else in that very short packet? Okay, October the 12th?
Just on IP 6, Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, just noting, you know, the work that they're doing, the amount of money that we've given them. It's great to have partners in the community like the Housing Fellowship and the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County who have the experience, have the staff to do the work in the affordable housing area and where we can, you know, if we have the funds, we can kind of funnel it off to them, and they can do the hard work, so then they do a good job with it.
Anything else, folks? Okay, I want to bring up two topics. One is IP number 5, a New York Times article about the U.S. withdrawing from UNESCO, which has implications, some implications for the UNESCO City of Literature. I find this to be a really short-sighted and poorly-informed action that undermines the United States and the world, but we don't control what the United States does. The good news is that we live in a city of literature, a city that's open to engagement with the world, and a city that is full of people who learn by reading, thinking, writing, and passionately engaging one another. It's absolutely central to the identity of this city, and there's nothing the president can do to alter that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I don't know, it was supposed to be part of the late handout. Did it appear? Yeah, okay. So, there's an October 11th memo from Tajas, I don't know how to pronounce this, Tajasvi Sharma, President and Other Leaders of the University of Iowa's Graduate and Professional Student Government, asking that we appoint a graduate student to serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the city council, similar to the UISG's student liaison position. And I met with Luke McGlanahan and Scott Roberts in early September. They told me they wanted to do this, and I said, "I couldn't predict how the council would respond, but what they should do is put together a memo, make a request to us, and we deliberate about it and see what we wanted to do." So, I can say I think their recommendation or their suggestion has considerable merit, but I see a couple of challenges to. One is just kind of a straightforward question. Why should we appoint liaisons from a particular group in the community when there are all sorts of other groups in the community? So, why that particular group rather than any other? Now, we know why the UISG, why we have that relationship with UISG. It dates back to, I don't know, what, 2007? I don't know.
Five.
Back then, you know, when there were concerns about excessive drinking and all that. Nonetheless, I think the question needs to be addressed and thought through. And secondly, there are other things we could do. Instead of formally appointing a liaison, perhaps we could assign a liaison to work with the Graduate and Professional Student Organization so that we do have a relationship with them, and they do have a way of bringing their concerns and ideas, et cetera, into our consciousness, but maybe not by doing it through the student liaison process. Those are just a couple of thoughts I have. I don't know if you have specific thoughts. We don't have to decide anything tonight. I just wanted to draw your attention to it. If you have some initial thoughts, we could hear them and then bring it back up at a later date.
Like, as for my thought is, I initially was going to be pretty receptive to this because we have the UISG reps. But to your point, Jim, the where do we draw the line problem, I think, is absolutely valid because I have a lot of respect for these guys, all the graduate students that work and study and live here and hopefully stay here. But there is that question, and it's sort of, we made a historical decision, or the previous councils did, with the drinking issue, which was a major public policy issue that they needed to get a hold of. So, I'd be cautious on that. But as to your second point, figuring out ways to engage, I think absolutely, if there's some way that we can do that, I like the concept of a liaison, but I guess I'm not ready to support a liaison at this point.
So, I'm actually supportive. I mean, for me, it's just a representative government, you know. UISG is the undergraduate representative government. Graduate students and professionals are representative government for graduate students. So, I don't see any issue from a standpoint as far as how we delineate why we wouldn't then support another, you know, organization such as the law school government organization or something along those lines. I think it's, to me, it's two different situations, so I'd be very supportive. You know, I think that if we're thinking about kind of the where does it end question, I mean, you know, I think personally, I mean, if we think about, from a liaison standpoint, going out and participating in some of these meetings that have that relevancy from a council perspective, I think that's important. But for this particular one, I see no reason why we wouldn't have a rep from them, you know, join us in the same way that UISG and BEN does in this particular situation. Again, I'm focusing on kind of the governmental body structure and just that.
But I guess to me, Kingsley, when you focus on that governmental entity structure, I mean, I come back to what Jim said. I don't know how you're drawing the line unless you're just saying, if it's university, then it's okay, but if it's any group outside of the university, we're not going to do it that way. Because otherwise, we are opening it up. I mean, it was a big deal when the undergraduates got the liaison, okay? And that has stayed that way for a long time. But unless you're going to say it's only okay to have a liaison from the university system, then, then there is a whole, you could draw the line that way, and I think you could have people outside of the university who would say, "Wait a minute, you know, what about this community, that community, I mean, immigrant community, whatever, within the city that would want, you know, a liaison?" So, I do think it's a real challenge in terms of how you draw the line. I guess, on the one hand, I want to be really supportive of this, but on the other, I am really concerned about the line drawing, as you're saying, Jim. And while we don't have to make a decision tonight, my interest in moving forward would be maybe to start with us having a liaison to them, find out kind of what their meeting structure is, see if we have somebody who would be able and willing to attend their meetings. Start getting an idea of what their issues are, what their concerns are, and bringing those back. Just as we could do that, I mean, we've got our listening posts, we've got other ways we, you know, we do the outreach with the neighborhood group. What's the board of all the neighborhood groups?
Neighborhood council.
Yeah, the Neighborhood Council, we do that. Maybe to start by having some attendance regularly for a little while at their meetings and see what develops from there in terms of what their real needs are and what kind of communication is needed to address some of those.
Kind of on the lines of what Susan's saying, and maybe Benjamin can help me out on this, I'm trying to think of what kinds of interests or concerns they would have that would be different than the undergrads. I mean, don't take me wrong, my daughter's a graduate student, but, and then on the lines of where do we draw the line, there also is a faculty and staff committee at the university, and perhaps they would want to have some input on the council also, so, you know, where would we?
I think their memo actually states their particular interest, and they are significantly different, even though there's some overlap with UISG. And there are, I don't know, something like 7,000 graduate and professional students? Was it 10?
I said 10,000 in the memo, yeah.
So, I mean, it's a significant body of people, right? John, did you have any quick response?
Unfortunately, partly because I was, I didn't get back till Sunday night, I didn't have a chance to read this material, but what you just said, I think, is important. It was a question brewing in my mind was, how large is this group of people? It's a sizable group. So, I think that suggests, you know, that there's some validity to having their representation.
All right, let me make this suggestion. Jeff, I wonder if staff could get back in touch with the folks who wrote this letter to us and indicate that we're not inclined to support appointing a liaison. to support appointing a liaison, but that we are strongly, we strongly desire to establish some kind of relationship so that we can learn from them and make sure that they are able to have a say in development of any policy that has to do with their well-being and so on, you know? And then, we could have, they could send us another proposal, a different kind of proposal, and we could discuss it in a work session? Sorry, I noticed our work session agenda's pretty light now. I'm worried about that. So, so we could have a work session.
I can communicate that. I think they, I think they are out here, too, and they have picked that up, too, so.
Sorry, I should have, I should have recognized you for sure. Sorry, my bad. So, I think that's where we're at.
I have a question.
Yeah.
For like the proposed work session topic, would it, would it be limited to like this new proposal, or would it include the current one? Because I think there's, I don't think we've fully fleshed out a lot of the problem, a lot of the problems that y'all might have with the current proposal. I know Kingsley expressed support for the current proposal, so I wouldn't want to limit our conversation. I'd prefer to just have a work session over a liaison or somehow building relationships with GPSG in the general, rather than, you know, some nuance to it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I get your point. That makes sense to me. I have no objection to that.
Okay, so we're just going to add this to the pending list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else having to do with information packets? If not, we want council updates, and I guess we're going to start with Kingsley. And then move left. Nothing from Kingsley. Susan?
Trying to think back. No, I don't think I have any committee meetings in the last two weeks.
John? No, I don't, I don't have any. Ali? Rockney?
The UNESCO issue. As soon as it was announced that the United States was withdrawing from UNESCO, John Kenyon confirmed to us that that would not affect our City of Literature status. The public can rest assured, he's already communicated that in detail. But that is the big news on the City of Literature Board. And of course, they just finished the wonderful conference, which is kudos to John Kenyon and everyone who put that together.
And Paratransit meets, I believe it's the first week of December. After that, we'll need to replace me. Then I'll have a...
Irreplaceable, Terry.
I know. Somebody's got to move on.
Okeydoke. Well, I want to mention two things. I'm on this Convention Visitors Bureau Board, and they're having a meeting Thursday afternoon at 4:00 p.m. I'm also on the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, I'm co-chair of that. They're having a meeting Tuesday from 3:30 to 5:00, so I have nothing to report. Okay, I think, I think that's it, isn't it? Work session is adjourned.